We are ready, yes. Melton. Pauls. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I was kind of taken, as I'm sure many of you were when you heard the news in the last week about what happened in Virginia with a member of Congress and staff to the Congressman, as well as in London. And I think the message, takeaway, if I could have you think about it, would be the sign I saw hanging somewhere outside this mosque in London was, "All terror should be condemned," or something like that. And "All violence should be condemned, whether you're on one end or the other." There's no absolute, no justification for these acts of violence. So I just ask that we pray that there be some sort of conversion of heart for the people who have these thoughts going through their mind, and somehow they can rationalize them, that they discover that that's just not the answer. Amen.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The Council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six. An ordinance to rezone the property located at 720 Pacific Street from RR to CBD, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, no lights. Oh, I'm sorry, Brinker, Ms. Harding.
Yes. I just wanted to thank the developers, John Crane and Matt Doherty, for, you know, $25 million improvement to this area. It's a great building, a lot going on in that neighborhood, and I think they should be commended for their investment.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
780As, item six approved. Item seven and eight relate to the same project. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone the property located northeast of 20th and Isard Streets from DS to CBD. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1PL area of Civic Importance Overlay District to incorporate property located northeast of 20th and Isard Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item numbers seven and eight are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. This is actually in connection with item 44, which is on the agenda today for the redevelopment agreement. This is the muse down there on 19th and Isard. So with that, happy to answer any questions regarding these two items.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, no lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Oh, you had a light on? I'm sorry. Okay, that's all right. Mr. Harding.
I just, so I was actually on Planning Board when this first came through, and although we had a little fun with the name of the project, I think a $30 million investment for student housing around the Creighton area is another great investment for downtown.
Yes, I agree. And hopefully, I think it's not all going to be for student housing, but most of it is hopefully going to be that way.
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a really good project. It's been moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven and eight approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the NCE-C district to incorporate into that district the properties located at 2503, 2505, 2509, 2515, and 2519, South 20th Street or 20th Avenue, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item nine. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine approved, seven to zero. Items 10 through 12 relate to the same project. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone property located east of 204th Street and north of Blondo Parkway from R4 to R4. Item 11, a resolution to approve a plat for the Villas of Piney Creek, replat one for the same location. Item 12, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the subdivision agreement with Real Growth LLC, the Villas of Piney Creek Homeowners Association, and Sanitary and Improvement District 573, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 10, 11, and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. This is a replat that really just adjusted one of the streets. This was actually finally platted some time ago, and so we encountered a hill in the back of these particular lots, so we had to move the street. So that's what this replat does. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Proponent? Opponent? Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Tollison. I live at 20221 Pearl Circle in Elkhorn. And my gripe, I guess you might say, whatever you want to call it, is the lawyer and the developer were here October of last year and stood here and told you guys that they were going to cut the weeds and stuff like that, that butts against all the properties that line up on Pearl Circle where we lived. And they have not cut at all this year. And I have pictures here, if you'd like to look at them, of, huh?
You can put them on the monitor there, and he'll turn the light on for you.
Let's see. There's the fence. This is, this is all right behind my property. And now, this, this section right here, that's all four feet high, because that's a four-foot-high cycle and fence. And this, and this is right below me on the right-hand side, and that is the drainage collection. Right here is a creek that drains right here, and you see a part of it right through there. Anyway, when we got that five inches of rain two weeks ago, it washed all the dirt off, and this is burrowed all the way down to hill, and all this dirt is laying down here in the flatland. But that's their problem. They're the ones that did that. But what I was, what I wanted to point out is, they have never cut the weeds, and they stood right here, told you that they were going to do it every two or three weeks, or at least once a month. And that has not happened. And I have called, I have called, let's see here, I've got their names right here. I called Amy, I mean Brianna, three times at the lawyer's office, and she told me she was going to get back with me. Jeff called from the lawyer's office twice, and the last time, he was telling me, they can't figure out how to get a lawnmower up on top of this hill that they created behind us, because it's like this. And behind my property, where that drainage collection is, they can't even get within 100 feet of the, my property along the fence, because of the way they've got it all graded out and everything. Unless they come up there with a riding, you know, like a commercial mower, something like 30 inches, 32 inches wide, then they wouldn't have any problem. Or, for that matter, they could come up there with weed eaters. But nothing's been done this year at all, and they stood here and told you. And all I, all I'm asking is, you know, the law, the rules say you're supposed to cut your yard if it's a foot high or more. Well, these are four feet high, and the county is already, the backside is the county. So I called the county, they came out, and they said they'll come out and cut the weeds and send the bill to the developer. And, I don't know. That's about, that's about what I wanted to try to address and see if we can get something done, because I talked to Brinker, Harding, a lot, two weeks ago, about the west side of my property. It's the same way, four feet high. And they, they came out and cut the weeds that are right in the middle, and the guy refused to come down along the property lines and cut. He says, "I ain't ruining my mower down there." I says, "Well, now, the county, the city told me in their notice that they were going to tell him to cut down to the property line." Well, he's 40, 50 feet from the property line, and, you know, the broom grass is that high. It's almost chest-high to me.
Can we, can we go ahead and get a reaction, get a response from the developer?
Okay. Have I gotten one?
No, I said, the attorney for the developer is here, so we can get a response for you right away.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and we've got your objection recorded, and we'll get his response.
Okay.
All right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. I did receive Mr. Tollison's voicemails, and I did pass them along to the developer. I will reemphasize the need to get out there and mow the weeds. Obviously, this is an active construction site, so it's still under construction. We're required to, of course, comply with the, you know, storm water management policies and plans that we have in place, so I know we're doing that. But I will make sure that they get up there and mow those weeds.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, before we close the public hearing, I just wanted to know if there were any other opponents who wanted to be heard.
My name's Mark Welsh, 5611 Howard Street. I'm not really opposed to this. I don't think you say neutral when you're up here. So I just wanted to point out that the, what I just saw in the pictures, the storm water plan apparently isn't working, because there's a lot of silt moving on that property. State law and perhaps city ordinances require silt to not be allowed to get into streams off of developments of a certain size, and, I'm sorry, I don't know what this certain size is. But I'm also curious, if you might, someone might explain why number 10 is needed. It appears that you're, you're rezoning it to the exact same thing, so maybe an explanation to those that aren't up on what this is really doing. It's rezoning from R4 Single Family Residential District High Density to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be, well, not right now. I just want to see if there are any other opponents who want to be heard. Are there any other opponents? Okay, does the proponent, do you wish any rebuttal time on the question that was just raised?
Sure. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. I will talk to the engineers as well and find out what's going on with respect to the storm water. I know, obviously, we had a pretty substantial and significant rain here last weekend, so I will get to the bottom of it. But, you know, I'm the attorney. I don't go out there and do field inspections, unfortunately. I wish I had the time sometimes to do that. But in any event, I can make the right and appropriate calls with respect to the weeds and also with respect to the storm water management, so I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Oh, is there a light? Is there a second? I'll second it. Been moved and, moved and seconded to approve items 10, 11, and 12. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 12 approved, seven to zero. Items 13 through 17 relate to the same project. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 31st and Mason Streets from R4 and R6 to R6. Item 14, an ordinance to approve a PUR district and an R6 district for the same location. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for 31 Masons Southwest, replat one for the same location. Item 16, a resolution to approve the replat for 31 Masons Southwest, replat one for the same location, and to vacate a portion of the existing plots for 31 Mason West, 31 Mason Southwest One and Clifton Place. Item 17, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement with Uptown Properties LLC and the Leavenworth Rose Upper West End Homeowners Association, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 13 through seven, 13 through 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Steven Held, 11506 Nicholas Street, representing the developer, Uptown Properties LLC. I can answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Held. First, I wanted to thank you again for hosting, I think, what was it called?
I wasn't a host. I guess I was hosting at the house.
You were, you were, you may not know it, but you were part of the program, so to speak, whatever you want to call yourself. But I think it was a group of Omaha real estate investment club people.
Yeah.
And there was a large group that you took around the neighborhood last night to show them your Uptown properties, and so I wanted to thank you for that first. But to explain briefly, if you could, this next chapter, the next phase of what you're doing in the Uptown High Density Residential Concept for Owner Occupied Properties in the South Leavenworth neighborhood.
Yeah, so in particular with this replat, last year we came through, we had the special opportunity to be able to accumulate a large amount of property that was non-contiguous, but certain pieces were larger than others. And so we came in and we pushed for PURs and replating on all of them, so that we could get, kind of try to create an urban model for lot subdivision and new construction of housing.
So how many units in this next phase?
So this replat in particular would allow for an additional 12, 18 units beyond. What's happened since we've kind of started is, certain landowners adjacent to us on the locations that we planned for, or we've strategically been looking at maybe expanding the footprint of the existing site that made up, you know, one of 11 or whatever it was from last year. As they become available, obviously, for us, the only way to go through and add that additional land to expand the scope of any given site, we have to go through the same PUR and plating process over again. So this replat is right where we're at right now. We have 13 units under construction. This site went from eight units to, or this plat was originally 31 Mason West, it went from 10 units to now, 10 plus 6, 10 plus 18, so 28.
But primarily, the highlights would be, if I could summarize, if you'll indulge me, your project, but most of these properties were code enforcement properties, and even one of the code enforcement property owners came to you as a voluntary willing seller and will be included in the project. And people like that have made this project grow in terms of its scope and the opportunity you have to increase the scale of your project and achieve, hopefully, more owner occupied properties in that area.
Yeah, yeah, and we're usually not looking to, you know, I know a house that probably would, if I went to a public forum where my development would be raising that property to do development, and I could see clearly that that property is, you know, probably going to get some protesters there because the house isn't in bad shape. We usually look for properties that are in pretty bad shape, that, and the large tract of land that we purchased was all vacant at the time that we purchased it.
The other little-known fact of what this particular developer's doing is, you have an area in town, a census tract, that I'm told has the highest density of single-family residences in the city, but at the same time, the lowest percentage of ownership of, within single-family homes. And so in this project, there's many different levels, opportunities for the city in terms of increasing the density in that area and an area of mass transit, while also increasing owner occupancy. And I just thought we might bring a little bit of attention, and kudos to you for what you're doing. And I heard you last night say that, to your audience, that this has become an obsession for you, but not, not really showing you any personal renumeration of any meaningful results yet, but hopefully, as we continue, that'll come along as you hope.
Yeah.
So thank you for your investment, what you're doing, and all the work you've done, not only within the neighborhood and the neighborhood leaders and the neighborhood residents and the association, the meetings you've had, but also now reaching out to others who show interest in taking additional personal time to help them understand what you're doing. So I would move to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve items 13 through 17. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 through 17 approved, seven to zero. Items 18 through 21 relate to the same project. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 192nd and Sailor Streets from AG to DR. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 192nd and Sailor Streets from AG to R4. Item 20, a resolution to approve a plat for Indian Point West for the same location. Item 21, a resolution to approve a subdivision agreement with FRK Development LLC, the Indian Point Homeowners Association, Inc., and Sanitary and Improvement District 559, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 18 through 21 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 18 through 21. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 through 21 approved, seven to zero. Items 22 through 24 relate to the same project. Item 22, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC district to incorporate into that district the property located northeast of 60th and F Streets. Item 23, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Omaha Bedding for the same location. Item 24, a resolution to approve the replat for Omaha Bedding for the same location and to vacate a portion of the existing plat for Spring Valley Industrial Park, replat 10. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 22 through 24 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Well, there's moved and seconded to approve items 22 through 24. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 22 through 24 approved, seven to zero. Item 25, an ordinance to rezone the property located southwest of 70th and Oak Streets from R7 to R8, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of council. John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant. This parcel is basically the southeast corner of 72nd and Center. Existing condition, has a parking lot and some abandoned foundations, so it's a somewhat blighted site. We're rezoning it from R7 to R8 to provide a building with structured parking and apartments above, approximately 160 units on three acres, so that'd be about 800 square feet per unit. So it's sort of R8 light, I guess we've heard that before. But we've had a neighborhood meeting. Councilman Jerem attended, so I ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, and I would say that I would call it neighborhood support, but only one person from the neighborhood came and about 10 consultants. But thank you for meeting at the Godfather's Pizza, for the pizza I didn't need to eat, but did anyway. And I'm pleased to support it. It's a good investment in a tough area, an area that actually was slated for office condos that never really took off, so there's a bunch of foundations there by the Montessori. But it's, it's a huge investment, and I think it's close enough to Exarban Village and the mass transit corridors of Center and 72nd to achieve success and close to the recreation and the trail, so good project.
Jay Development moving to Omaha, it's great to have that developer here.
Right, and my, one of my neighbor's daughters-in-law, too, so even better.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Actually, John. I was going to ask you to come up and say that this is going to be the home office of Jay Development. We're glad to have them back on the side of the river. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 25. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 approved, seven to zero. Items 26 and 27 relate to the same project. Item 26, an ordinance to rezone the property located northeast of 38th Avenue and Harney Street from GC to NBD. Item 27, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and a NBD for the same location. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 26 and 27 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Matt Dwyer, 3814 Farnham Street, representing the developer here and here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 26 and 27. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 26 and 27 approved, seven to zero.
Thanks all. Have a good day.
Items 28 through 32 relate to the same project. Item 28, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 168th and Ida Streets from AG to DR. Item 29, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 168th and Ida Streets from AG to R4. Item 30, a resolution to approve a revised preliminary plat for Anchor Point for the same location. Item 31, a resolution to approve a plat for Anchor Point for the same location. Item 32, a resolution to approve a subdivision agreement with Anchor Point Development LLC, the Anchor Point Homeowners Association, and Sanitary and Improvement District 567, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 28 through 32 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, which is Anchor Point Development LLC, but this is a Boyer Young company. Pretty standard case that's before you today. It's the second phase of the Anchor Point Development. There's just one issue that we have that our client wanted us to just get the read of the council on, and it relates to the landscaping in the cul-de-sac. And with me today is Dave Boatman of Boyer Young Development, as well as Kyle Bull of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. But we have a pretty significant-sized cul-de-sac. I believe it's 173rd Circle, and I'm going to let Kyle kind of take over and show you the radiuses and such, but we think that this cul-de-sac is big enough to have it landscaped in the middle, as opposed to just a sea of concrete, from an aesthetic perspective. So we have some examples and some pictures as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle to kind of explain this. This is kind of a last-minute deal, and I did call Mr. Stube. I know Public Works, not necessarily Public Works, has the issue with it from a design perspective, but more from a snow removal perspective. But we think that there's more than enough room to remove the snow in this cul-de-sac and then, and yet have it look aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle real quickly. But, we think that there's more than enough room to remove the snow in this cul-de-sac and then, and yet have it look aesthetically pleasing, uh, to the neighborhood. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle real quickly, and, uh, I will fill in any gaps if we have any.
Thanks for that blow of confidence. Uh, Kyle Bull, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine, oh nine Mill Valley Road. Uh, if I get the projector, please, that would be great. So, what I've got highlighted here is, um, in residential subdivision, the, the radius on the back of curb on that subdivision is thirty-seven and a half feet. Uh, and this, this is the city planning, uh, Public Works Department's standard radius for a residential cul-de-sac. What we're proposing to do here would be having a green space that would be the same size as... Zoom... Having a green space that would be the same size as a standard residential cul-de-sac. So, in other words, the area that I've highlighted in orange would become a green space. The area around the perimeter would be a twenty-foot wide concrete path. Uh, the, the thought behind this is that, obviously, from a truck-turning standpoint, whether it's school buses, uh, snowplows, uh, fire trucks, um, we have a, a turning radius that as, is as large, or is actually larger than a standard residential cul-de-sac. Snow could be pushed towards the middle of the cul-de-sac. Uh, there are a few different examples of this around town. The first example that I'm gonna show a picture of here is in Deer Creek. This is Potter Circle in Deer Creek. Uh, this particular cul-de-sac has a green space in the middle, uh, that is a radius of seventeen and a half feet. Again, the, the cul-de-sac interior green space that we're proposing is thirty-seven and a half, so it would be another forty-foot in diameter total wider than this current application. Uh, I also have a, a larger example out in West Shores. Uh, this West Shore example for Farnham Circle, uh, here, the, the diameter, this is quite a bit larger. This particular radius is sixty-five feet in, in radius. Uh, similar twenty-foot concrete path on the outside of the, uh, the green spaces. So, what we're proposing is gonna be a, a median between these two applications. Uh, one would be between the Potter Circle application and the Farnham, Farnham Circle application. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have on this particular item.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
And, I guess I was just going to, um, clarify that, that, of course, the Public Works Department wants it all concrete as opposed to that landscaped area. And so, what our client asked us to do is get the city council's opinion on what your view is, uh, with respect to these types of cul-de-sacs. And, and they think it's a much better situation aesthetically than just having to see a concrete. So, I don't know what we can do here, and maybe we talked to, to Bob about that, if the council's so inclined to allow for the landscaping, uh, within the cul-de-sac, or if that's the decision of Public Works. You know, I'm a little unclear on that, um, but, but maybe you can shed some light on that, uh, Bob. So, with that, with any questions?
It would be HOA maintained.
Oh, yeah, it would be, it would be HOA maintained, so the city would not be required to maintain that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Well, and I just wanna say, I believe the cul-de-sac I live on, right now, we, we have that, um, and it's very pretty and it's got a big tree in the middle, and we've had fire trucks and, and everybody else go around it. I've never seen a problem, and when there's snow removal, it goes into the, into the center. So, I, I wasn't aware that the cul-de-sac I lived on, if it was built today, wouldn't be allowed to be landscaped at this point, but I can tell you that I think the neighbors that live around it, we appreciate it, our homeowners association, and those of us that live on the street, I would say, my neighbors, I won't take any credit for it, um, take care of the, take care of the maintenance. And we all like it and, and appreciate it. So, um, with that, I just thought I'd share that information.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'd have a question. Uh, Mr. Jerem.
Is, is the traffic engineer, or Bob, are you prepared to share your side of the, the story?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Um, these are locations, were in the past, that when they initially get constructed, they have a tendency to have ownership by the abutting property owners or the HOA. Uh, we have found, uh, over the years that there becomes a certain point in time where the homeowners are not receptive to maintaining those, and so they, there is a level of expectation by the homeowners from the standpoint of how it looks in comparison to the level of service that's provided by the city. So, we have, in the past, run into numerous situations where, uh, the property owners have opted not to maintain them, and we've gone in and actually removed locations similar to that and actually put concrete in. So, initially, they become something that, you know, was receptive by the property owners, but they become over a period of time, um, essentially something that becomes somewhat of a liability or an eyesore to the property owners.
Well, my initial reaction would be that this is something that not only has aesthetics, but if there were a long-term maintenance requirement somehow required even after annexation eventually were to come, that this is something that could help in terms of the city's environmental goals, in terms of decreasing stormwater runoff and providing less grayscape or, and within development. So, um, if the primary concern is what is gonna happen long-term, how is this gonna be cared for after the HOA goes away and is then part of the city? Um, Mr. Jovan, you're acting like you wanna jump out of your chair, so...
Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen, forty, West Center Road. Uh, yeah, I guess I did wanna point out that, I don't know if you wanna turn this on. The, these houses, this is Anchor Point, they're going to overlook, you know, the dam site fifteen A. These houses, and this is the cul-de-sac that we're talking about in particular, so the dam site is here. These houses are gonna be probably between four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars apiece, uh, in this particular area. So, the values are gonna be there to make sure that the landscaped area is always maintained. I think it would be, it would be odd to have...
Mr. Jovan, the, the question is, and who's gonna live in these homes and what are they gonna pay if they have means? Frugality spans all demographics, so...
Good point.
At some point, people get tired of paying.
I understand.
So, what is, what is the mechanism for long-term assurances that the property owners who abut that would maintain it?
Well, there's an obligation of the association, of course, to maintain all the green areas within the entire development, and there's mandatory assessments and dues that are required of each and every lot owner, and every, each and every lot owner is a member of the association, and there...
Is that recorded with the covenants?
That's recorded in the covenants, yes.
Like Regency has a covenant that runs with the land.
That's correct.
This will run with the land.
This will run with the land.
That is in the covenant?
That's in the covenants.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there, Mr. Harding?
Just had another question. So, um, wa- was that, was that in the original application that the, that those would run with the land, or is this just all being brought up now?
Oh, the, the covenants?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, they always run with the land, of course.
No, I know, but I mean, specific to this one, because if...
No, I mean, if you look at the subdivision agreement, the association is a member, or a party to the subdivision agreement. It says that they'll maintain all these green areas, but in this particular case, um, Public Works didn't want that landscaped. And like you said, I don't think it's the design side of Public Works. I think it's more the maintenance side of Public Works with respect to snow removal, and I guess what Bob testified about as far as, you know, eventually, maybe some of these HOAs don't maintain the landscaped areas. Now, our covenants are very specific about requiring the maintenance of this green su- uh, area and the landscaping, and of course, mandatory assessments that are due to pay for these types of things. So, I know most of you are aware of Boyer Young Developments, and they're always generally, uh, well-done, so...
Is, um, is there a motion?
Move the approval.
With or without the landscaping, I guess?
Okay. Do we need to add that? So, I wanna move it with, and allow landscaping in the cul-de-sac.
Is there a condition upon the motion? That it actually be in the covenants recorded that run with the land that requires the abutting property owners to pay for the...
Right.
Maintenance and upkeep in perpetuity?
Correct, and we, I, I believe it's in there, correct? Mr. Jovan?
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items twenty... I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Harding.
I, I just wanna ask... Bob and/or, uh, Dave, so is this, this was the first time you've heard of this, is that correct?
Dave Fanzlott, City Planning, yes, first time I've heard of him.
Bob Stube, Public Works, first time.
Would, uh, would you feel more comfortable if you had time to take a, another look at this?
Well, um, Dave Fanzlott, City Planning, um, just so councils are aware, we've, we've, we've thought about these in the past. Um, there's a reason why Public Works, um, and planning, um, don't, don't always support landscapes, medians, covenants can expire. Um, homeowners associations, we've seen in the past, have dissolved, and then, um, either after annexation or prior to annexation, somebody's looking for the city to maintain this stuff. Typically, that's what happens. So, it's a pretty standard comment by, um, planning and/or Public Works, when landscaped islands come in and cul-de-sacs, um, not, not to support them. We've had, um, a few instances in our jurisdiction where we've actually been approached by the folks who do live in the cul-de-sacs and asked to have them removed, um, because of snowplows and large trucks and buses that come to look at Christmas lights. So, we've had actually people come in to us and request that they be removed because they're not being maintained or being run over, so...
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, again, I would wanna reiterate that what Dave is saying is correct, and, and obviously, when, when those, um, abutting property owners, when those HOAs don't wanna maintain an interest in that amenity anymore, uh, obviously, uh, they don't wanna pay to have that, uh, particular area removed either. So, that particular expense does end up falling upon the city.
Any further council discussion, or is there a second?
I think it's been moved and seconded to allow it and, and allow the, as long as the covenants say that the HOA maintains it in perpetuity. If I could just add that the majority, I would say the majority of the neighborhoods that, in my, at least in, in my district that have moved west, when we annex, the homeowners associations stay in place. I mean, I, Renmar Ridgefield, Candlewood, just in my own area, Linden, Linden Park, I, I mean, that, I could go down and list. I can tell you, when, when you're investing in a home, I think of that kind of value, it's gonna behoove them to keep their homeowners association in the event that they are annexed. So, I guess, by not allowing it, I mean, something so small that would really benefit the, the circle, saying that maybe thirty years from now, they may want it removed, seems a little extreme. So, I, I maintain, I think...
Motion and a second? Thank you. Mr. Jerem. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pauls is first.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have two subdivisions. Uh, one was upset because they thought the city was going to remove its arborist acres. They have very neat, neat entrances. They thought the city was gonna do something to them when they worked on the roads, so they were upset with that. I had another subdivision, wanted the city to come in and replace, uh, their entrance because they were falling apart, and then they found out they had to pay for them. Guess what? They replaced them. I think the people are willing to put, force some money, and like you say, if the houses run as, to the cost that, uh, Mr. Jovan's told us, I think they would probably be, be in favor of continuing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, um, Madam Clerk, or maybe you need to speak to the city attorney. If the motion were first made to item thirty-two, the subdivision agreement that she just made in terms of requiring this, um, maintenance to be, um, performed and paid for by the abutting property owners in perpetuity, would that not amend the subdivision agreement, therefore giving the city the right to enforce that and collect against the abutting property owners?
Okay, yes, an amendment's gonna have to be made to the subdivision agreement. So, we'll do a vote on twenty-eight through thirty-one, and then we'll consider thirty-two separately.
So, Mr. Kratz, city attorney, would you confirm what I just said? Or dispute?
Paul Kratz, city attorney, I'd love to, but I wasn't listening. I was talking to some other people.
All right. That's fair enough, fair enough. I, I get accused of that at home, too, so...
I think what he was saying is that should be, uh, change should be made in the subdivision agreement, and I agree with that.
So, if we amend that to require the, in place the obligation for permanent, uh, in perpetuity, the obligation to maintain that, that, uh, landscaped area within the cul-de-sac and the property owners or the HOA fails to do so, that would then give the city the right to enforce and assess, um, such costs upon those abutting property owners, whether or not...
As part of the subdivision agreement.
Okay, so, I'd ask them, the person, uh, council member Melton, and the second, is your motion then to amend the subdivision agreement first, or according to the clerk, I think we have to wait and do that?
We'll do twenty-eight through thirty-one.
So, that's a simple motion to approve, and then we can take this nitty-gritty on item thirty-two. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So, Councilman Jerem, so just to be clear for the record, then I'm gonna move to approve numbers twenty-eight through thirty-one right now.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
And same second?
Yes.
Okay. No further, um, Mr. Pauls, you still had a light on?
Well, I, I just have a, I just have a question. Because I was told that these entrances to these subdivisions, if they, uh, if the homeowners have developed something, they're, they are responsible for it. They said that's a known fact. So, I'm surprised this would not be a known fact, uh, that if there's something within the dis- uh, within their subdivision that they would be responsible for. Because, am I, um, did I misread the, the subdivision, if they put up some type of entrance, they are responsible for that? Is that part of the, the process? I'm just asking a question to, to Public Works or whomever.
I'll try, I'll stab at that one. Dave Fanzlott, City Planning. Rich, I think the entrance, um, are you talking about the entrance medians?
Yes, yes.
I, I think that those are looked at differently because everybody drives by those who live in the subdivision, everybody drives by them. It's the benefit of all the folks who live there when you get individual cul-de-sacs. Unless you live in that cul-de-sac, you're probably not driving down there often.
I, I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve items twenty-eight through thirty-one. Uh, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-eight through thirty-one approved, seven to zero.
Nine and thirty-two.
Thirty-two, this will be the amendment?
Yes, I would like to, I would like to move with, I would like to move an amendment to thirty-two, uh, that states, um, that will amend the subdivision agreement, um, and that the homeowners will be responsible in perpetuity for the care and maintenance of the i- the cul-de-sac island.
Does that include the cost?
Including the cost. Is that, Mr. Jovan, is that your understanding?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-two.
I just asked.
Well, to approve the amendment.
Approve the amendment, then we have to...
Then we have to approve the, okay. So, uh, Mr. J- Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, city attorney, Paul Kratz, is that sufficient to give the city enforcement perpetuity?
Uh, I believe it is. The only question is, uh, and you may know it's kind of an obscure legal proposition, that you can't place restrictions on deeds in perpetuity. Whether or not this is falls, falls on that, I don't know, but for the purposes of the subdivision, I think you can go ahead and, and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment. To approve the amendment. Uh, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment is approved, seven to zero.
As amended?
As amended. I just wanna clarify for the record that it'll be the, it's the homeowners association. I think council member Harding, I, I just said homeowners. Yes, our intent is that it's the homeowners association.
Okay, same second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is approved as amended, seven to zero. Item thirty-three, a resolution to approve a preliminary plat for Beverly Hills, replat nine, located southeast of Eighty-fourth Street and West Dodge Road. Planning Board Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. The applicant is requesting this item be withdrawn from the agenda.
Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 33 is withdrawn, seven to zero. Item 34, a resolution to approve a special use permit for Sonia Tipler to allow daycare services in an R4 district located at 6978 North 88th Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Sonia Tipler. I am the owner of 6978 North 88th Avenue. I'm also the owner of the daycare. We currently are licensed for 10 children, looking to expand the license to the maximum of 12, so that the two pregnant mothers of children that are already in daycare will have all of their children together. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 34 approved, seven to zero. Item 35, an application to approve a Class C liquor license for the Emsec Crew LLC, doing business as Patty McGowan's Pub and Grill, 4503 Center Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Dan Emsec, member of the LLC Crew, 2915 Castle R Street, doing business as Patty McGowan's Pub and Grill, 4503 Center Street.
Good afternoon, Lisa Emsec, Emsec Crew at 2915 Castle R Street, doing business as Patty McGowan's Pub and Grill at 4503 Center Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerram?
Yes, if you could come on back up. First of all, I want to thank you for your investment in buying the Old McFly's property and opening your business. It was kind of a, the wind went out of the sails of my immediate neighborhood when one of our local businesses closed. So the fact that you want to open it up and you're so well-known in the neighborhood and your families are so big in the neighborhood, we're all rooting for you and can't wait till you open. And if you want to give us a little bit of a pitch about what's your, what makes this place special, or you hope to offer for your customers, I want you to take a minute and do so.
We're going to be an Irish bar theme. It's a strong Irish neighborhood. We both grew up in the neighborhood. We have strong ties to the three parishes, Holy Cross, Our Lady of Lords, and Thomas More in the area. Our children, all four of them, have gone through Our Lady of Lords. My wife's family is the owners of Dinkers Bar and Grill. So we have a long history in the bar business, and we're looking to take on a new adventure and go after a different aspect besides the Polish aspect. We'll go after my side this time.
Is that right? Okay. Well, I would recruit you to Holy Cross, but I don't want to get in trouble with Father Petramali over at Our Lady of Lords. So I'm really happy for you and look forward to coming to your business. And just a little reference that the McFly's at one time did offer occasional neighborhood meetings to meet at your place, and they were fairly well-attended.
Absolutely.
So good luck to you, and I would make a motion to approve.
Mr. Palermo?
One question out of curiosity, the name, where did you come up with that?
My mother's maiden name is McGowan, and her name is Patricia. So when we went to Ireland, they always called her Patty. So it's after my mother.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve item 35. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 35 approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 36 through 46 were held on June 13, 2017. Moving in second to approve items 36 through 46. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 36 through 46 approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 47 through 58 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, what, I'm sorry.
I don't have an agenda, so I'm not sure which item it is.
I think the item that you're talking about comes up a little later. All right? There are no, since there's no one else, public hearing is closed. Moving in second to approve items 47 through 58. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 47 through 58 approved, seven to zero. Item 59, an ordinance to approve a contract with Elavon Inc. for merchant card services is an amendment requested by the Finance Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Oh, we've actually held a public hearing. Move the amendment. Yes, we moved in second to move the amendment. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment is approved, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 59 is approved, seven to zero as amended. Item 60, an ordinance to designate an enhanced employment area for the Capitol District located at the northwest corner of 10th Street and Capitol Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 60 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the Capitol District. This, what's before you today is the ordinance to approve the general business occupation tax for this particular area. I did want to call out that this was part of the original redevelopment agreement that I believe was approved in 2014. So it was always contemplated that we would be asking the city to impose this really self-imposed occupation tax on the various users and occupants within the Capitol District. The amounts are set forth in the ordinance, I don't know if you want me to go through those in particular, but we have one-half, 1% of the gross sales for the retail-type businesses. We have three-tenths of one cent for those retail businesses that are south of the Capitol District itself that we're including. Most of these are buildings that are owned or controlled by Mr. Moylan, who also is, controls the Capitol District. There is one change, 909 Capitol Avenue will be removed. That's the Lot 1 Capital Place. They decided that they didn't want to be part of the occupation tax, which is fine with us. But the others outside of the Capitol District itself will still be subject to the general business occupation tax. We have 25 cents of per square feet of commercial office area that will be imposed, and then we have $95 on an annual basis for the residential units within the Capitol District. The use of the revenue that's derived from the occupation tax will be used for promotional expenses and/or capital expenditures that were part of the original redevelopment as contemplated by the community development law. We're discussing some of those issues right now with the Law Department. We do have about $54 million of TIF-eligible expenses that were as part of the original development. We only requested $35 million in TIF, and that was only because that's all the project would really support. So this general business occupation tax actually could go to offset some of those other TIF-eligible expenses and/or the promotional expenses to operate the entertainment district. We're anticipating about $250,000 of annual revenue based upon the general business occupation tax. Again, that could go either towards the capital expenditures that have been made, TIF-eligible, or towards the promotional expenses for the entertainment district. It's my understanding that the budget for the entertainment district is about $350,000 annually. So actually, if the general business occupation tax is only generating about $250,000 annually, there's really a shortfall of about $100,000 in the proposed budget, which actually might inform me that that will be filled by sponsorships with respect to the use of the entertainment district and the plaza space within the Capitol District. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, this is a self-imposed tax. As I think Mr. Jerram said earlier, people vote with their feet. If they don't want to pay the tax, they don't have to pay the tax because they don't have to actually go into the Capitol District. But it was always contemplated that this would help offset and defray the costs of either operations or the expenditures that were made in constructing the Capitol District, which is a $250 million project with a whole lot of job generation. It's a new concept to the city of Omaha as far as an entertainment district. So you can all look at it now and see where it is. I believe the hotel's supposed to open next month in July, and so hopefully everyone's pleased with the way that project's turned out. With that, happy to answer your questions. Mike Moylan is also here, if anyone has any particular questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there, Mr. Jerram?
Yes, Cassie.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office.
Yes, we had at the pre-council a little discussion about the mayor's position on this, and she's obviously out of town, but you're here. And if you could explain for us, so we have as a part of our record, the mayor's position on this particular request and this occupation tax.
Yeah, the particular request that's before you today is something that the mayor does support. As was previously indicated, this was something as the development process was going through, as we were crafting the redevelopment agreement, was contemplated from the beginning to make sure that this project did actually get off the ground and it helped impact the area, not just turning a parking lot into a mixed-use development, but also to help as we continue to look at the north downtown, drive business to CenturyLink, et cetera. So yes, she is supportive of what is in front of you today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moylan.
Hi, I'm Mike Moylan with Shamrock Development, 1111 North 13th Street.
As I understand it, the hiring process has already even begun in terms of the employers that'll be relocating into the Capitol District. And if you could share a little bit about what's already happened and the people already on the payroll, who are already working in terms of how it relates to this ordinance, and just take a minute there, and I have a few other questions for you.
Thank you. Shamrock has four employees, but I think you're referring more to everyone else. The Marriott itself is probably the biggest employer, and we've been hiring for three or four months already. We have 20 to 25 staff already hired, plus they already have the other, the rest of the staff as they open here towards the end of July, contemplated already hiring them. We've had job fairs all over Omaha, North Omaha, South Omaha, and other parts of Omaha to obtain the employees for the Marriott. In terms of the apartment building itself, the management company is Lund Company. They have had to hire additional staff, too, to help not only fill up the apartments but continue to manage it along the way. We have an office prospect of about 40,000 feet that would be, I think it's probably about 100 employees that would be part of that in itself. And then the big employment, of course, is all the retail users that will be coming to the district. We expect 15 to 20 restaurants and bars that would be a part of the district that would be, obviously, hiring, as your average restaurant would, could be hundreds and hundreds of additional employees in the area.
So I don't know how many years ago it was the legislature passed this as a part of the community redevelopment law in the state, but certainly, as I see your project and your investment partners and your $250 million-plus investment and risk that you're taking, that the city and the visitors to this city will support you and your endeavor and the jobs that are being created there, and the unique attraction that you aspire to be and are putting the pieces in place to become, it seems to me that the city should be a partner with you in that process. And as it relates specifically to this voluntary occupation tax, it's something that you have counted on as a partner with the city with the redevelopment agreement that was passed, and it's you that is asking for it, but it's ultimately your customers, whether they choose to attend functions or the businesses at your development and the visitors to our city in terms of the success in the revenue you hope to be able to achieve to fund this, to then further promote and bring more activity in businesses and spending by customers and visitors to that area, that then makes the whole thing work. So to me, even though this project, as wonderful as it is, has escaped the geographic boundaries of my district into District 2 over here to my right, and I'm very happy for this massive investment in District 2, to the northeast part of our city, to me, I look at you as a partner with the city in this investment, and I'm pleased to support this and wish you nothing but the best. I want to thank you again for the enormous risk and investment you have made in that part of our city.
Those are kind words. I appreciate it very much, Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
May I speak with you a little bit?
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Cassie. And I understand this process because I think I probably was involved in the legislature. But I do have some questions. When did we establish the occupation tax, this particular occupation tax? How long ago?
This particular, well, what is in front of you is actually going through right now. The city itself had to have a base ordinance, and that was just approved earlier this year. It's something that we've been looking at, trying to get that crafted, based on what other communities, there's only about a handful, and I know Mr. Kratz could probably tell me exactly how many, but I want to say maybe less than five right now that actually have this base ordinance on their books throughout the state.
But this actually is relatively new to Omaha right now.
Correct.
So the one reason why I have some questions about this, because it's the first time out, and I think we need to have everything about as perfect as possible because it's always hard to go back and try to make changes. So that's, but I did hear that this was contemplated in 2014, and sort of, I thought this morning, well, you guys have sort of agreed on this in 2014, that I got this project moving. Well, when we just passed it just recently, I think that's, it's a little hazy when you say in 2014, you sort of almost guaranteed this. So that is a part that irritated me a little bit this morning when we were discussing this. And as I said earlier, this is the first time we're using it in the city of Omaha. And I truly want to, this is a tax. People were upset when did the restaurant tax. So I want you to walk me through this. The city and the state tax, sales tax is 7%.
The state tax would be 5.5. The city has a 1.5% sales tax, and by state law, the city is capped at 1.5%.
Okay, so we.
So we have 7%.
Okay, so then you add on the restaurant tax, which would be?
Two and a half.
So that's nine and a half.
Nine and a half.
And now I'm seeing that part of this, there's going to be an additional 50% of, one-half of 1% on retail restaurant in this particular area, at least part of it. So in other words, we are increasing actually the restaurant tax again.
I'm not sure you're necessarily increasing the restaurant tax because you're not actually amending the restaurant tax ordinance. You're enacting an enhanced employment area tax that would be added to your total tax bill.
But if I go to a restaurant across, if I go to the old market, I would pay.
You would pay less.
I would pay a half a cent.
You would pay less.
I just think we need to make this clear to the people. I know it's a choice, but a lot of times people don't even realize when they go into areas because they're not thinking in terms of that. The part that I'm a little interested in is 50% in one part of the Capitol District, and then in the south Capitol District, it's only 30, or three-tenths of 1%. Now, why is that?
That is something that you would need to ask the developer and his legal representation about and how they had decided to make that structure.
Okay.
That that was something that they brought forth.
Okay. And right, and I think, and I will call Larry down here a little bit. And also, I see for, if I have a residential apartment there, I pay $95 a year for that residential apartment, and then with the possibility increasing 2% annually, no more than 2% annually. Should I be asking Larry these?
Not necessarily. I mean, if there's something I feel like needs to be asked there, I'll defer that[1783.34] to them. But with the residential and actually how the occupation tax, LB 562 is structured, you have the ability to either do it on sales tax or per square foot or per residential unit. So there's a variety of different ways that you can actually structure how you move the enhanced employment area, the LB 562 occupation tax forward.
Okay. Do you have an idea how many apartments are going to be in this area?
If I remember correctly, it's around 200, but it's been a while. I walked by it the other day when I was going down to CWS, and it's a really tall building and a nice addition to our skyline.
Okay, so I'm just going to use the number 200. And $95, that would be about $18,000, $19,000. Logic would tell me instead, is there a tax advantage of charging as a tax as opposed to just adding the $95 a year?
It's all dependent. I would tell you, a lot of that's dependent upon how the developer's financing is structured, what that looks like. I know there was some conversation earlier this morning about every developer coming in and looking at it. I would tell you, I don't think that would be the case. I really don't. There are some flexibilities that allow for this to be used in areas that are not classified as a CRA or Community Redevelopment Area where you can't use TIF. There is a path to move forward with that. Some may take a look, some may not. I think it ultimately would come down to whether or not, as the developer, they feel like they can make that and still lease up their property. But again, that's a developer decision. I would tell you, some people could choose to put it there, some people might not, but that's a decision that that local in that particular project, they would have to make as to what makes the most sense for them.
Well, to me, I'd look at that, I'm just looking at the numbers, it looks like it'd be basically $8, basically more a month if they would charge me on my room, you know, my rent. But anyway, so you said around 200, and the South Capital District is separate, that's the reason why there's a, and I may get that information. I heard this morning, this is a 20-year plan?
Correct.
Okay, and averaging $250,000 a year, so that means around $5 million. Is that the goal?
If you do your basic math, $250,000 times the 20, I mean, you get to about that. I wouldn't say it's a goal, but that is the budget that they have set forth with what they're proposing. Again, looking at this as a way to make sure that long-term this project is sustainable, can be covered, is not into a situation where in 10 years, 15 years, there's something that goes wrong and they need to have capital replacements and don't necessarily have it. So it is a part of their overall financing structure. But I personally can't say it's a goal. I think that's a question you'd have to ask the developer and their attorney in terms of what their overall goal is, but I do know it's part of their financing package.
Okay, okay. Well, then I'll just have Larry come down. Thank you, I appreciate your answers.
Yes, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Larry. I'm just trying to get, because I'm concerned about the accountability, because these are tax dollars that are not going to the citizen, they're going to the business. So that's one reason why, you know, if it's tax dollars going to the city, we're held, we're responsible, we're held accountable. But if it's going to the business, I'm assuming then the business is held accountable. So the projection, I know these have to be projections, but you're projecting around $250,000 a year.
That's for the operation of the entertainment district, part of the Capital District. The other capital TIF-eligible expenses that were part of the original redevelopment agreement, they have mostly been incurred and can be justified. And that's why I was bringing up earlier the fact that the redevelopment agreement had an estimate of about $54 million in TIF-eligible expenses, but we had a maximum of tax increment financing of $35 million. And the reason why is we didn't think the overall valuation would support more than the $35 million. What this general business occupation tax allows for is to defray more of those TIF-eligible expenses and/or provide for the promotion of the entertainment district. And I did want to clarify one thing. I mean, in the redevelopment agreement that was approved in 2014, all we said, and we did this both with respect to the entertainment district and with respect to the enhanced employment area or the general business occupation tax, all we said is that it is anticipated that the developer will apply for it and seek. So it was never, it wasn't a foregone conclusion. We just knew back then, I mean, these things take a long time to get to where they are. And so both with respect to the entertainment district and with respect to the enhanced employment area, it's something we anticipated as part of the original agreement that we would be doing that in the future. So I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, perhaps I misinterpreted this morning. I figured that, well, we sort of have to approve this because we said, and I understand where you're going.
Yeah, it was, no, it's not a foregone conclusion. We actually just put it as we anticipated doing that.
Well, okay, so again, I maybe just rehash this a little bit. You have a rental unit, you're charging $95. Why not just put that into the rent?
Well, I think the idea was to take advantage of this economic development tool, and as opposed to just raising the rent, we wanted to use it for, you know, specific either TIF-eligible expenses and/or promotional expenses. So we really wanted to use this economic development tool to defray some of those costs. I mean, that's why we did that. The idea, I think, behind some of the retailers and the people that are surrounding the plaza or the common area of the entertainment district is that these monies will offset those costs. So instead of having like an merchants association or something, you impose this tax. I mean, it's very similar to what they did in Lincoln, obviously, with Rail Yard. But those costs help to fray these other expenses, again, whether they were capital in nature or whether they're promotional in nature with respect to the Capital District. Again, this is a huge project. It's a, you know, $250 million investment with a lot of moving parts, so we were trying to get every advantage from an economic incentive possible.
And I understand that, but I keep hearing the word promotional, but as I read it, the purpose of paying all or any part of these space within this district, the cost and expenses. So this money could be paid, could be utilized for anything.
No, I think what it says is that the use of the revenue would be, shall be used to fund any expenditures that are lawfully authorized to be made under the Act and this ordinance in connection with the development operation, or to be made under the Act and this ordinance in connection with the development operation or promotion of a business or redevelopment project located within the enhanced employment area. So it has to be in accordance with the law, and we're working with the Law Department to make that determination and make sure that that's protected.
So this, for this particular area, we've actually, probably, the occupation tax enhance TIF, I would say have been a little bit generous.
Well, we appreciate the city's cooperation. Again, this is a very significant project with a lot of capital investment by the private side as well, and we do appreciate the city, and this is a partnership between the city of Omaha and the private side developers.
But again, I'm coming back to that tax is going to the business. It's not going to the operation of the city as all the other taxes. Restaurant taxes, that goes back to the city. The sales tax goes back to the city. This is actually going back to the business.
It's going back to the developer and/or the association that's responsible for maintaining or operating the entertainment district, if you will. So it's one of two things, or maybe a combination thereof. Again, still trying to work that out with the Law Department, but one of two things, it's either going to be defraying, you know, original TIF-eligible expenses, which is what it was designed to do, and/or is going to also provide for the promotional expenses associated with operating the entertainment district. And I think what Mike talked about earlier at the pre-council meeting is that the idea is the promotion of this entertainment district and the hotel and the businesses that surround the entertainment district are, he's trying to draw people in from eastern Nebraska, of course, and of course, western Iowa, but probably there's other people that would come in from northern Iowa and maybe as far as Kansas City. I mean, again, just like the Power and Light District down in Kansas City, this is a destination that we hope people will want to go to and attend and enjoy it.
I agree with that, but I also say the Old Market is the destination too. I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair to, because I'm concerned that all of a sudden we're going to have pockets of occupation taxes throughout the city, and you don't see that as a potential.
No, I mean, I think that there's, I have one project that will be coming down the pike here. There's a very unique project, one that's in need of some economic assistance, but it's not in a community redevelopment area, so, and it can't be, doesn't meet the Blight Standard definition. So in that particular case, there will be an enhanced employment area for that particular project. But again, very, very unique, different project. I don't think you'll see this every day happening on just every project that comes down here. I just don't think you'll see that. I think nine out of 10 times, if it's in a Blight Standard area, the TIF is more than sufficient to defray the TIF-eligible expenses, and you don't need that additional general business occupation tax. So I don't think, I don't think the floodgates will open by this particular-
Okay, because I just picked up on, you're saying typically, not in this case, but typically you think the TIF would be the answer in most cases.
When it's, when you can meet the Blight-
When you meet, when you meet that.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm just looking for, that this just all of a sudden exploded, and you're saying it's not going to. I'm just listening to you.
And I think every case can be looked at on its own merit. And I think, you know, everyone that's standing behind this podium and addressing you has to show that there's merit with respect to each and every one of those projects that's before you, seeking the occupation tax, just as they are when they're seeking tax increment financing as well.
Well, see, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know the accountability factor in all those, even the TIF projects. I mean, that's something I'm looking into. I'm not saying it's misspent or not being done correctly, but I, I'm trying to figure out the accountability factor. That's what I'm trying to think, the accountability factor of having these tax dollars go to the business world, which I'm not arguing with, but the accountability to know, and I haven't delved into that, and I'm sure that's part of the process that I don't know.
And we're having ongoing discussions with the Law Department regarding that very-
And see, that's why I said that we, this discussion should have happened months ago, so then laid out right here, it'd be a yes or no. That's where I'm coming from. I appreciate your answers today.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is that all your questions, Mr.? Ms. Melton?
Thank you. And first, Councilman Pauls, just to kind of clarify what you had brought up earlier, this is what's called a cumulative tax. So it'll be a tax on a tax on a tax. They don't just add it up and then charge a straight 10. All three will be listed. In this one, I assume from what I'm reading in Section 3, it'll be the last one. Am I correct on that, Paul?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, it'll be the last one, but the reality is the state sales tax will actually be the last. With the restaurant tax, we had an issue of-
Right.
Which one comes first. The Revenue Department says we apply the restaurant tax, in this case, the occupation tax, and then the sales tax would be on top of that. State sales tax would be on top of that.
Okay, so the restaurant tax goes first and then the occupation tax? And then sales tax?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully, all the retailers get that right so that they don't overpay one and underpay another.
There's a little bit of an issue last time.
We had that issue a couple of years ago.
Yes, we did.
But that's a problem, when you get so many taxes in a row, I think it does get confusing.
Maybe Larry, you might have a different thought on that.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't see that, and I was talking to Mike about that. We don't anticipate having a tax on a tax. I think it's on the basket of goods sold only, and that each, the sales tax on that basket of goods sold, for example, the general business occupation tax is on that basket of goods sold only, and then the restaurant tax is on that. But we're not accumulating the tax, so that general business occupation tax isn't going to be on, you're not going to be charging a percent that includes the restaurant tax, for example. So it's going to be on just what's sold.
Well, the restaurant tax and the sales tax work that way, so I don't know why this tax would-
Well, we didn't, we don't think that it was going to, we didn't intend it to work that way. We thought it would be just on the-
You might not have intended it, but I believe that that's how it has to work. I don't know any other way around it. You're going to have three different taxes on the totals, and it's not taxed just on the subtotal individual one, it's a tax on a tax on a tax, which is how the restaurant and the state-
That's something we'll look at, but I don't, I mean, if there's a way not to do that, we didn't anticipate doing that. I mean, we thought that it would be on just the raw cost of the goods sold.
So your tax would then be first, then you do the restaurant tax and then the sales tax.
I suppose that would be the case, yes.
Okay. And I guess, the rest of these, I don't know if it would necessarily be to you. I have for Cassie.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office.
Cassie, how many of these do you have in the queue right now? How many projects are discussing doing this right now?
There's only one other one that's actively looking at it. We've had inquiries over the last four years of people that have come in and, I would say, flirted with the idea, but in looking at it, figured out it really wasn't for them. But I would tell you, there's really one other one at the moment that is even remotely considering it.
And I guess I have this question, and I'm not sure who can answer it, but as part of this, if I were to go renovate a building in the Old Market and hire 30 people, at that point in time, could I then come and be a district, and then the whole Old Market could be within that district?
It is, I'll defer to Paul, but I would tell you, I would believe they would have to create the enhanced employment area before you could tax the whole district like that.
Right, so, Ms. Kratz, so if I, if I put $3 million in investment and hire 30 new people, and I do it right in the middle of the Old Market, could we then apply and have the Old Market become one of these districts?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, a couple of issues with that. First of all, we've already created the general idea of the enhanced employment tax, the occupation tax. We did that a few months ago. With each new one that comes on, we'll do something specific like we're doing here today. Now, if somebody in the Old Market wants to do that, we would have to do another ordinance saying this person is going to impose this type of tax. Now, the other issue that you bring up is how much employment that you have, and this gets into more fine legal point. If you're in a community redevelopment area and impose the occupation tax, you do not have the employment requirement or the spending requirement. If you're not in a enhanced employment area, you do have the spending and employment requirement. So in the Old Market, that would be in a CRA, so they would not have to meet the employment and expense requirement.
And Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would also have to have, depending on the boundaries, the property owners-
And the property owners have to agree to it.
Yeah, have to agree to it before they would ever be able to make application.
So that, now I'm probably more confused than before I ask the question.
It's confusing, yes.
So- To short answer your question, theoretically, you could, but you would have to have 100% of your property owners within the Old Market that would be willing to come in and say, yes, we want to do this. The likelihood of that happening, I'm not sure that that's there considering they're already part of the Downtown Business Improvement District, as well as they have the Old Market Merchant Association as well.
Okay. And how much, Ms. Kratz, how much higher can this go? How high can the occupation tax go? I know that they've set it at half a percent. What was the, what's the max?
I believe the max is 2.5%.
2.5?
I believe so.
So what's the process? We're passing the .5 now, well, .5, .3, I mean, we went through them. What would be the process if they want to increase it? For every increase, does it have to come in front of the council?
It would. I'd come back and be on the amendment of this particular ordinance.
And I, we, and I know, I think Mr. Harding's got his light on, I'll let him answer the, I think, I had one more question that I was curious about, but I think it's, it is confusing, and I, at least on how to collect, so hopefully we can get that resolved so that they aren't being collected improperly. We had a restaurant here in town that had flipped them around, overpaid the city, underpaid the state, they had to pay the state, and it was too late for them to get their money back from the city, and it cost them about $4,000. So I think that's going to be really important. This gets passed in 15 days, and you're opening in July. You may want to make sure that what you understand it to be and what it actually is are the same. So I, you know, I just, I think that we start running into these where the citizens don't realize that they're going to be taxed until after they get their bill. And I think if we start using this all over the city, I do think that that's going to be a problem. Just my commentary, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
As you're there, just, could you, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understood what you were saying. If it's in a CRA, a qualifying CRA, that it does not have to meet those benchmarks?
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office. Actually, as the law reads, there's a way to have an enhanced employment area that is not within the boundaries of a CRA. And if that enhanced employment area is not within the boundaries of a CRA, there are additional employment requirements, investment requirements. I even think there's some health insurance requirements that go along with the employment benefit too, that are required in order to be able to enact or use if approved by this- body, that occupation tax within that area. But, how state, how state law reads, and it's, it's a fun read, bedtime story read, if you really want it, but how it reads, you can use it in a CRA or without a CRA. There's just some extra requirements if it's not within a CRA.
Okay, so, again, is the $3 million threshold and 30 employees, is that the threshold for someone who is, for one that is not in a CRA?
Correct.
So, let me say that in the opposite way then, which is, I think, how I was trying to ask, ask the question earlier. If you're in a CRA, you don't have those benchmarks?
It is my understanding via the Law Department that that is correct. However, I would tell you, I think if we were looking at something, we would expect that there be some significant investment and significant employment if you are within a CRA, if we were going to use this tool.
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize, Mr. Palermo and I were not on the council when the, when the base ordinance was approved, so indulge me, please, I don't know if this would be Larry or Cassie, but, so why, why couldn't or wouldn't a BID or merchants' association be utilized for this?
There are certain requirements and some limiting, if you start looking at state law, which governs what BID dollars can be used for versus what, you know, if you're within a CRA and you apply for TIF or say this, there's just some different requirements about what that looks like and how you raise the money. If you're a merchants' association, you can go create a merchants' association without any, without the city's approval. I mean, theoretically, you could have a group of businesses band together and each say, we're going to throw, you know, $1,000 in the pot every year, and this is what our pot's going to go to. And then, if you don't, I mean, they would have to figure out on their own way how to make that transaction happen, how to collect, what that looks like. The BID, obviously, this body would approve any BID and any amendments to any BID assessment that would come forward. There's some pretty clear-cut requirements within state law about how you assess that. I would tell you, the downtown BID and the formula that it has in order for the property assessments, fairly long and complicated, but we get through it and we continue to work through it, and I think that they've done a very good job and continue to grow and expand and look at different ways as downtown continues to change. As with several other BIDs, it's no different than the Elkhorn BID that was created, I believe, about this time last year, in their assessment method. There's different ways on how you can, how you can create that revenue source coming in. This, this particular act, LB 562, truly is an economic development tool, and that was part of, part of the reason, and Councilman Paul's, you were down in the legislature at that time, as was my friend Senator Adams, when this was, when this was going through, and it was a big look at incentives and economic development incentives, and this was one of those that came out of that legislation.
Okay, thanks. So, maybe I'll ask Larry this, because you mentioned something about how the funds were used to. I thought I heard earlier, and I apologize, I thought I heard earlier, that the funds were going to be used for marketing, or for marketing the project on an annual basis? Is that, did I understand that right?
That may be one area that we use the proceeds for. What the ordinance says is that we have to use it in accordance with the community development law, so we can only use it on those things that the community development law provides for. And so, we're having discussions with the Law Department about what those are. So, it could be, like I said, either further defrayment of the original capital improvements, you know, TIF-eligible improvements.
TIF, yeah.
And/or, or it could be promotional expenses to operate the entertainment district, or it could be a combination of those. Again, we're still working with the Law Department to make that determination. The law probably needs some cleanup as far as the state law and the statutes, but we're working with what we have at this point in time, and sometimes these statutes aren't always as clear as we would like them to be.
We're still trying to figure out whether or not, I understand using it for the TIF-eligible, but whether or not it-
And it works, it works really for us either way, because we still have a tremendous amount of TIF-eligible expenses that we couldn't recapture through the TIF, that the general business occupation tax could be used to defray.
So, might just be kind of a matter of semantics of which pot you're kind of taking on from?
That's exactly right. And if we can use it towards the promotional expenses, towards the entertainment district, you know, that's what Mike would like to do. Again, the budget being substantially higher than what the revenue would be coming in at, so there's going to have to be sponsorships or other money coming in to actually operate that entertainment district for the types of public events that Mike is planning on.
Okay. In the base ordinance language, it talks about a sunset, but I don't see in the ordinance that we're looking at today, any mention of the sunset. Is that somewhere in the statute that cited within the ordinance?
It only is 20 years.
Well, it's, yeah, it's 20 years by state law, so it can't go on beyond that. The state law would trump whatever ordinance we have in here. But, you know, one of the things that we have to do, I believe next week, when you vote on this, is we're going to have to vote on an amendment of the whole, number one, to take out that Lot 1 capital place from the legal descriptions, because they're not going to be included in this general business occupation tax. So, I talked to Paul earlier today, and there may be a couple other minor tweaks with the actual ordinance to address some of the things that we've talked about today. Would that make sense to you, Paul? And so, the ordinance that you have may come back a little bit different, but I think that some clarity of some of the things that we've talked about will want to address.
Maybe including-
Yes.
Calling out specifically the sunset?
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, so now I'm getting down into the weeds a little more, sorry. And I appreciate you indulging me.
No problem.
When does the clock start on the sunset? Is it with each, the day each business has a building permit approved? Or, because then you're going to have sunsets rolling off at different times for, explain, if you could explain the process for how the sunset works then?
I believe that we start at 20 years on the date of the approval of the ordinance. Obviously, the occupation tax on some of the businesses won't be recaptured immediately because some of the businesses are not, for example, the office space that Mike was talking about, that hasn't been constructed yet. But, the apartments, of course, are constructed, the hotels constructed, the retail is constructed. I would tell you that the parking facility doesn't have an occupation tax at all associated with it, so, but I believe the 20 years would begin from the date of this ordinance. I mean, and that's one of the things that we've been waiting on, actually, to get the businesses up, so you can actually collect that tax to not have that 20-year commencement. So, maybe we can put a commencement and a termination date in the ordinance as-
Okay.
So, for clarification.
I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul's?
The questions we're answering, asking and answering now, to me, seem, should have been done weeks ago. That's just where I'm coming from. Cassie, what is the limit? If you can recall, there's so much occupation tax, aren't we limited as a city by the state?
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office, I believe, under LB 562, if you are going to use that, you're capped at 2.5%.
Okay. Okay, okay, so I need, okay, thank you. You know, this, this is where I find this sort of ironic, because when I was in the legislature, and the Chamber of Commerce was against this, we wanted to give the citizens of the city of Omaha or any large city, the opportunity to vote for a 5% tax, a half-a-penny tax in, say, sales tax increase if they so chose. Five on the city council would have to say, let the people do it. The administration of the state, the Chamber of Commerce, was all against it. In fact, one of my friends, who was a state senator who voted for it, lost his job the next time around, because they used that against him, because he was for raising taxes. And, see, I see that as what I'm doing right now. I'm going to raise that five, half a percent, I'm going to raise that right today, if I vote for this. And we couldn't do it at the state level because of all of the pressure from all the groups, including the Chamber of Commerce, as I recall. I like the idea, I think the idea's good. I just have an issue, and I'm counting on, yes, Cassie, I'm sure you have, yes?
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. I think I would make one distinction between what you're talking about with the extra half-cent sales tax. It's my recollection that that would have been citywide-
Citywide, yes.
Rather than this just being project-specific.
No, it was citywide.
I just wanted to make sure that that clarification was up there.
Right. Thank you. Because there was a lot of pressure on doing it, but then people were against it, but this is a smaller area. It's good to have you down there then. I don't know about now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes, Mr. Kratz, just very briefly, with regard to the discussion before on how this tax is actually levied and collected in the order in which it appears, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that determination a matter for the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue for the state?
Yes, it is. It's now for the city to make that determination, but for the Revenue Department.
So, I would recommend that before next time we appear on this and we are voting, that that actual ruling be reduced to writing so that we can make it a part of the record, so it's clear to the applicant, the manner in which this is collected, so that there's no confusion and no mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I think it's good we're having this discussion today and getting into some of these details. I don't think we could have had this discussion two months ago, because you couldn't really have this kind of conversation until you have the details like we do today, as it applies to a certain project. But, you know, how did we get here to this point today? As has been described, the legislature passed enabling legislation. The Capital District is considering a major, major investment. They engaged the Mayor's Office and the city administration as to how it's going to work and what the financing is going to look like, and there's, I believe, an MOU, or at least a redevelopment agreement entered into with the mayor and the administration as to how that's going to work, that contemplates these things. Now, these things have come to the council and are starting to come to the council, as any redevelopment agreement does. The actual agreement itself, and then things like the entertainment district we have, and now this particular ordinance in terms of implementation. And what I'm describing there is, is the same way any major redevelopment happens in the, in the city. It first engages the Mayor's Office and then comes through the council for implementation, implementation and consideration. So, Ms. Paven, if you would, a question I want to ask you, I think it's good we're focused on the details on this particular project, because that's what's before us, but there's also been some discussion this morning about kind of the bigger picture as to how future redevelopment, redevelopments might be impacted by this. So, knowing that anything major is first initiated by a developer with the Mayor's Office and the administration, it comes to us later, do you have a perspective to share with us about how you would consider this being implemented going forward and who this might apply to and who might it not?
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office, given that it is a fairly new tool, I think there would be a lot of discretion that needs to be taken regardless of where the project's located or how big the project is. You know, I had one that came to me really about a year after the redevelopment agreement that contemplated using this for Capital District, that was extremely tiny and looked at it, and when I asked them their revenue, there was just no way to even justify, really even looking at it based on what they were doing. Moving forward, I think it's something that is going to have a lot of conversation as projects do move forward, not only just with the administration, but taking the temperature of this council. If it's something that, given the project, the type of project, what it's bringing, the impact it could have on the community, if that's a mechanism that they would be willing to, to support, and is something that's on the table. In terms of guidelines, I mean, we can certainly take a look at crafting some sort of guidelines or policy or general parameters around what that looks like and when, when we'll use it. For instance, I mean, we do have a set of TIF guidelines that kind of outline our, our policy and guidelines around TIF. That is something we can look at drafting for this. It's really, I do believe, though, it does need to be project-dependent and does it make sense for the project and what type of impact that particular project would have on, on the community and as a whole before we, we go in. It's not something that should be taken lightly, it's not something that is appropriate for every project, and it certainly isn't something that I know many of the developers that are out there would ever even consider. There's just some that I know won't consider it, and there's some that maybe, and then as they get into it, might think that it's a, it's something to do a little bit more exploration on. But, I think we're open to collaborating with the council on what that looks like and figuring out a balance that allows us to continue to promote development in all parts of the city and providing the necessary tools for the necessary projects within those parts of the city.
Okay. And taken from your remarks, I suppose, absent special circumstances, you'd probably view it as a tool that's not used very often, probably only for major reinvestments where it's required or necessary to have it come to fruition?
I would agree. I would agree with that statement.
Well, as we talked this morning, I think the Planning Committee or the council in general is willing to engage in that, that conversation to flesh that up.
Would be happy to be included in with that and making sure that we, we set the parameters appropriately, again, but not putting caps on, on what certain things look like and making sure that we're actually having the best investment possible that we're making.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then, no further lights. Next time.
Item 61, a request from Kenbrook Roofing, Inc. to appeal the rejection of their bid of May 10, 2017, for the OPW 53137 Fire Station 30 at Bay Reroof Project.
Public hearing, Agenda Item Number 61, is today. Proponents, please.
My name is John Burgland. I'm representing Kenbrook Roofing regarding OPW Project 53137 Fire Station Reroof on appeal. Our bid was turned in, we attended the pre-construction meeting. In our bid, we inadvertently left out the Class E license and the RC1 form. We currently have both, the Class E license that expires in 12/31/18, that is and was in fact valid at that time of the bid, and we've turned in those documents with copies to Elizabeth Butler, excuse me, I can't see well, Larry Tatum, Heather Pierce, Eric Carlson, Ryan Wiesen, and Robert Stubble, the, of OPW. And we'd like to be awarded the contract and save the taxpayers $10,000.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Heather Pierce, Public Works. We are of a position that this appeal should be denied. It's, it's something that we expressly put into the contract documents, a checklist of required documents at the time of bid, as well as on the individual forms indicating that these, particularly the RC1 form, which is kind of the linchpin to this denial, it is set in the municipal code that the bid is required to have this form completed and attached to it. That was not the case in this particular low bidder, and therefore, we found him non-responsive. As we were reviewing it, we found other errors that we did indicate, such as the failure to disclose the Class E general contractor's license, but really, the linchpin behind this denial to award is the, is the RC1 form and the failure to remit that.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarrett?
Can I speak again, please?
Mr. Kratz, I'll call you up in a minute.
Okay.
City Attorney?
Yes, sir, Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
We've had incidences in the last several years in terms of bid submissions that were not compliant with all the requirements that were set forth in the bid documents that the Public Works or other departments published. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, we've had a longstanding, consistent policy of not accepting bids that are not compliant with the ordinance.
In fact, the, in the case of non-compliance, whether this bidder be small like this one or large, we've had any range of non-compliant bid submissions from the very largest of contractors to the very smallest. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, we have, and some of those would have saved the city a fair amount of money, but again, we've stuck to our requirements.
And would you take a minute to ex- And would you take a minute to explain what it would mean in terms of potential liability to the city for claims by those who did comply with all the bid requirements and why we stick to this technical insistence upon following what the bids require?
Well, obviously, it would open up the city to a legal challenge and we try to avoid that by being consistent. And again, that's a purpose of our consistency.
Thank you. It's been my practice on these and I think I heard it best when I heard it a few years ago. We had, I think, a bidder from Kansas City that came up that it was a $20 or $30 million bid. And the next low bidder happened to be an Omaha contractor that's a very large company and also does a lot of business for the city. And the comment from the second low bidder who was going to be awarded that was they had gone through the same painful learning experience themselves. And it was only by going through that painful process that they then become sharper and more responsive in terms of their bids that they submitted and also in terms of going through the checklists and when they had questions asking. So for the combination of reasons in terms of why we don't, or at least I haven't voted for these sorts of appeals, that's what my thinking is on this one. But I did want to, I did say to this appellant that if he had something additional he wanted us to hear, you could come up and I'd allow you to do that. But I think, as I see this, our hands are tied in terms of what we do here. And I would say as the council member who introduced the whole concept of the Responsible Contractor Compliance Form that this council adopted unanimously at the time, that is one of the linchpins to our community that assures our community members that our bidders are in fact responsible contractors on a number of different levels that are addressed in that attestation form. So I personally take very seriously the omission of that one as a part of this non-compliance. So that's going to be my position and my motion to deny the appeal. But if you did want to say something else, I told you I'd allow you to do that.
Sure. In Article VII, where it asks for that form, it also asks for the vendors that will be used.
Name an address for the record, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. John Burgland, Kenbrook Roofing. The Article VII asks for the vendors that will be used, the subcontractors that will be used, the Class E license copy, the RC1 form, and the emerging small business form. And often, these items are asked for after the contract is awarded. I erroneously, you know, didn't put them in there. I admit to that. I would submit that the other contractors who submitted bids also did not submit the vendors that they were going to use or the subcontractors they were going to use. And I think that those bids, if they are looked at, should be scrutinized as well to see if those things were included. Because if you eliminate or omit one thing then and you're eliminated, then anybody who eliminates anything else should be eliminated as well.
Thank you. And one of the, you may sit down. And we can have Heather confirm it on the record, but she told us this morning, every contractor who makes a submission gets the same level of fine-toothed comb scrutiny in terms of its compliance with the bid requirements. And Heather is nodding her head out there that that in fact was done here. But just so we don't have it as a reference, but on the record, can you say that that is done in this case?
Sure. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. That is correct. I'm actually pulling up, if I could have the overhead, a spreadsheet that we do. Bear with me, technology. Trying to limit the amount of paper and so we'll zoom in here. As you can see on the spreadsheet, we go through every single bidder and we go through all of the requirements. Subcontractors are only required to be listed if they are in excess of 10% of the total contract value. And that's something that, once we get past these initial requirements per the municipal code, as, and I've actually, you know, go into, did they identify any SEB even though there was none required on this contract? This spreadsheet is done for every single contract that comes through the Public Works Department.
So that would be my motion.
Mostly denied.
Yes.
Removed and seconded to deny Amy, Ms. Melton.
Actually, I was just going to call Heather up to this.
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
Yeah, Heather, and just to kind of, I agree with everything that Councilman Jarom has said. Because we have had these cases where, in all honesty, we feel bad for the contractor, but we have to stay consistent. In the last four years, I don't recall a time when we've ever made an exception. Do you recall a time?
I have been working with the SEB ordinance and then shortly thereafter the RC1 ordinance for the last six years and we have yet to make an exception.
So we've remained consistent, so we've treated everybody the same, and I would say fairly, because if they don't have the documents, then the bid cannot be approved. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing.
Thank you. It's removed and seconded to deny the appeal. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to deny the appeal is passed, seven to zero. Item 62, a request from JBP Concrete and Construction, LLC to appeal the rejection of their bid of May 17, 2017 for the Florence Library Community Center Parking Lot Improvements Project.
Public hearing, agenda item number 62 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Jose Esposito. I represent JBP Concrete and Construction, LLC for the Florence Library Community Center Parking Lot Improvements Bid. We bid the job and I was the lowest bid. And my bid was rejected because they say I'm not in compliance with the SEB program, which is a small emerging business. And I filled everything properly, all the documents, and I sent it in. I'm a small emerging business myself. I listed another company that's for a material supplier, which is Nether Enterprise, which is a SEB participant also. So I say we are 100% small emerging business participants. So I'm asking you guys to reconsider my bid and hopefully I can get it awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, Winsley Durand, Greater Omaha Chambers Reach Program, 1301 Harney Street. And I've got a brief statement. I'll read it so I can be very succinct. I am here in support of JBP Concrete and Mr. Esposito. He is a Reach participant as well as a city-certified SEB. My role here is first of all to inform you that they have the manpower and the skills to perform the project. But additionally, by awarding this project to JBP, jobs in Omaha's underserved markets will be preserved. The item is before you today solely due to the fact that the paperwork, JBP, they indicated that they did not have any SEB participation. They thought, this was due to the fact that they thought it was self-evident that they themselves were the SEB and that by being awarded the project, there would be 100% SEB participation. Basically, we are asking that, for the council's approval of JBP being awarded this project, it's just another step in achieving the city's SEB utilization aspirations as well as economic inclusion for Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, Nether Enterprise.
Name an address for the record, please.
Robert Penn, Nether Enterprise, 5326 Hanover Circle. I am the concrete supplier for JBP Concrete on this project. This is an interesting thing with this ordinance. It seems like we're still going through a learning curve with this ordinance. The SEB form, the purpose of the SEB form is for a non-SEB to fill out that form and show and prove that they are in compliance. I am also a SEB, so actually mathematically, with all natural reason, he's actually at 130% in compliance because I'm 30% of his cost to do the project. I'm supplying them with the concrete and I am also registered as an SEB. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. Was it Wesley? Could I have you come up here, please?
Yes.
Did I get the information right? Did you help to fill out these forms before or after they were submitted?
No. I was contacted after they were informed that their bid was rejected. So I did not have participation with the filling out of the forms on the front end.
Okay. Did you also notice there was two errors on the forms that were submitted?
No.
Can we ask if that was the case, Heather?
This was Parks. This would be Mr. Bench.
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation.
Did you need the question repeated?
No, no, I can answer it. The questions, or there were two incorrect, where they both said that they were filled out that it was 0% SEB participation.
Okay, thank you. And I know I had spoke to Jose a couple times on the phone about this. As you heard already today, the exceptions to these rejections in the past, they're difficult, especially for us. So I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Could I respond to that?
Yes.
Okay. So I think from his understanding, the form was for a non-SEB to indicate SEB participation. Again, he is the SEB and represents 100% SEB participation on the project since they would be self-performing the project. And so again, from his understanding of what he was being asked in terms of the subcontracting, he did not have any subcontractors. He is self-performing the project, therefore he has no SEB participation other than himself, which he thought was self-evident.
Sure. And I guess back to Mr. Bench, if I could ask you another question. Was the second lowest bidder, was his application turned in properly?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, Ms. Melton?
Yeah, this is one where I'm having some difficulty. Because in all of the other denials that we've ever had, it's because there were forms that weren't filled out, forms that weren't turned in, things that were requested. There's a checklist of things that need to be handed in. In this particular case, it was all done. Checklists were all checked off. Is that what you said, Mr. Bench? I mean, all the forms that needed to be handed in were handed in. He just put zero in one of the lines instead of 100%, which he was 100%. He just didn't understand the question asked. Is that right?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. I do believe that is correct.
Did anybody bring the form so that we could look at it? Anybody have it? Oh. Only because I, I'm struggling with this one a little bit because all of the other ones that we've denied, it's because they failed to do something. Here, it sounds to me like it was a complete misunderstanding, not an accident-type thing. But he was saying, "I am an SEB. I've checked that." And then another spot, in two spots, it asks, "What is SEB participation?" Meaning, "What other SEBs are going to be working with you?" And he put zero because it is zero, although it looks like he's buying concrete from an SEB. He wouldn't actually need another SEB because he is one that qualifies him then completely. I actually think this is a different case than we've ever seen before. Heather, I'm going to put you on the spot. I know it's not Parks, but can you come up and answer a question since you're sitting there?
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
Okay, Heather, since you do see a lot of these, have you seen these where an SEB may put zero when they are the SEB? Have you seen this come up on the public work side?
We have seen this very early on in the program. Within the first few months of the program being incepted, we had a few issues where that was the case. In the case where there was a percentage or line item reserves, we considered that non-responsive. In the case where the entire contract was reserved for SEB participation and there were self-performance requirements, in that case, it kind of necessitated the SEB be the general contractor. And we did, in those instances, waive the form submission.
So you have waived it in that particular case because it's more of a, everything was turned in, RC1. I mean, everything else is turned in. It's just kind of a misunderstanding of what they're, since they are the SEB, you could...
That was correct. This was before the RC1 ordinance was passed. So really, it was just the SEB and the bid pricing documents that were required at that time. And I think there was one or two contracts, again, very early on in the program inception, that we did have that requirement waived because of the conditions of the contract.
Okay. And I don't, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but doesn't this, I mean, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to. Does this seem a little different than what we normally deal with in denials, where it's failure to file the forms required and follow the checklist?
I am not familiar with the contract requirements to say, yes, this meets the waiver conditions that we've seen early on in the program. It's something that we certainly don't encounter anymore. That's one of the reasons why we incepted a checklist as a part of our bid form. We talk about this in the pre-bid. We do a lot of iterating through the pre-bidding process to make sure that contractors know this is something that you have to do.
Okay. But if you were to have a contract come in from an SEB and you know that they're an SEB because you're probably a little more aware of what all the SEBs are than necessarily Parks because you're working with them, would you deny, would you deny the bid if they were an SEB but put, you know, no SEB participation?
We have had those denials. We have. Again, because of the contract conditions and the reserves that were set, we have had SEBs that have failed to submit required documentation of SEB participation on, for instance, contracts that only have a proportional reserve or specific line item reserves where they may or may not perform that type of work or if they have to identify certain self-performance requirements with the rest going to an SEB. If they fail to submit that form, they get denied.
Okay. All right. Thank you for sharing that, just that additional information. I appreciate that. I struggle with this one only for the fact it seems to stand out. I'm not sure where I'm going on this one.
Mr. Jarom.
Yes, thank you. Ryan Weason, City Law, please. Ryan was in the back of the room and did not hear the call for documents, but we've located documents, at least some of them.
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney, and I don't know for sure that this is the document in question.
But it's one of the documents.
I believe it was a document that was submitted by the appellant in support of the appellant's appeal to the city council. It would seem to indicate that it listed an entity as a supplier of concrete and also indicated that the percentage of the total of the contract was 0%. It would have been signed on May 17, 2017.
So in reading that, though, do you see anywhere on that as it pertains to this concrete supplier that it was just limited to non-SEB suppliers?
Can you, I don't understand the question.
Yeah, there was a statement made earlier by a couple of people, one of the concrete supplier and one by Winsley Durand, that said that the forms were not intended to be completed by, completed in their opinions, by a currently certified SEB contractor. Rather, this form was intended and says it's to be completed by a non-SEB it's to be completed by a non-SEB to represent to the city those SEB contractors they are using. And since they're already SEB-certified, in reading these forms, they did not believe they were required to put anything down on those. That's, I think, the crux of the appeal, that as you read these forms, they clearly, on their face, don't apply to a certified SEB who's filed his certification. They apply to a non-certified to prove that they are using certified.
Well, I would point you to the paragraph at the top of the page that begins with notice, and it states...
Can you blow that up a little bit? Yeah, thank you.
And I'll read it for you, too.
Great.
"This form must be submitted by the general contractor/lead consultant at the time of bid/agreement submission, designating all companies utilized to complete the scopes of work designated as reserved for program participants on the participation/utilization form attached to the project documentation." And I believe the interpretation that should be given to this notice in this sentence is that, again, all companies that are participating in it, whether that's the general contractor or any subcontractors, would be, need to be listed. It doesn't just specify that only subcontractors need to be listed on this form.
Okay. So, as you read the plain meaning of that first sentence, it's not limited to just non-SEB contractors? It's all contractors that have to complete that form?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wees. Well, certainly, he listed on this subcontractor that, who he was using, and then he put a Euro, what I would call European zero for a circle with a line through it for a negative symbol for no, no SEB certification. So, on this form, your heart goes out to this contractor in terms of, hey, you know, we want you to do business with the city. We want your businesses to succeed. I'm gonna ask the city attorney what his opinion is on this, on this particular appeal, and if this is any different than the other non-compliant. Technical as it may be, but is this different?
Paul Crat, City Attorney. My answer is the same as with the last appeal. We've always been consistent. And I think it's important that we be consistent. It's unfortunate in this situation, but we've had others that are unfortunate also.
Okay. Well, I'm rooting for your business. And businesses like yours, we really do want to succeed because it's an important goal in the city. I just don't see, you know, my concern being alleviated that by granting this appeal, we don't open the door to claims against the city by those who did properly complete the form. And as brutal as it is in my gut, I just, I'm gonna have to follow the city's lawyer at this point's recommendation. But hope that you understand and avail yourself of the technical assistance, not only by Reach in the future, but in the city's Human Rights and Relations Department that can help make sure that these forms are completed as they are supposed to be before you submit your bids. So, that'll be my position on the case. And I would make a motion to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to deny, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I think that's the right conclusion on this one, as hard as it is and as unusual as this circumstance is because you're the very business we're trying to help with this program. But I was thinking where Councilman Jerem would kinda end it up there was, if Mr. Durand is still in the audience there, I can't tell if he's behind the book. Okay. So, that, this is the very reason or very example of why we do contract with Reach, to help contractors understand the process and make sure we don't have snafus like this. Did you say he was part of the program, or...?
He is a program participant, yes.
Okay. So, was there a, where did the breakdown happen in terms of not understanding the paperwork? Or have you coached his business on how this works with the city?
So, we have a plan room.
And your name, yeah, and your name and address for the record.
Name and address for the record.
Winsley Durand, 1301 Harney Street. And so, yes, he is a program participant. He's been to our plan room, where we have plans available on city projects. And we have architects and engineers available to answer questions. And so, we don't necessarily see all submittals that go in or all of the paperwork. But when people do have questions, they can come and ask those questions, have those answered. So, we will, this is definitely a lesson learned. And so, he will come to our plan room again and work with our engineers and just make sure that all of the other documents. Seems like all of the other documentation was incorrectly. And again, it seems like the attorney who's here just a moment ago was indicating that all contractors, whether they're subs or generals, are to fill out the form. But it, to me, it seems a little ambiguous yet as to whether he was to list himself. He, as the general on the project, did fill out the form. He just did not list himself. And so, it still seems to me to be maybe not as clear as it could be for a SEB that is acting as the general. And if there is a possibility for that form to maybe be clarified for SEBs, that would be great. In the meantime, we will work with our SEB contractors to make sure that they understand. Very few of them have the opportunity or do bid as the generals. They usually bid as subcontractors and therefore are listed by somebody else. And so, there is a learning curve here. And we'll make sure that we work with all of our SEBs.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate. I think that is the instance here that you just identified. And I'm sure we're all willing to help you clarify that, clarify that if needed, as is Mr. Danner. And so, we wanna make sure your business is successful going forward. We don't, and we don't see this situation again. So, I hope y'all can get together and make sure everyone has the same understanding. If you need our help to clarify things, please let us know. All right, thank you.
Before we, before we take the vote, I just wanted to ask Mr. Danner if there, if there's any comments that you would like to make in relationship to this, this particular field?
Absolutely. Spencer Danner, Human Rights and Relations. Couple things I'd, I'd say. One, that SEB participation disclosure form is a universal form. It is something that is working with the other departments that we have had for quite some time. And each of those, whether they are prime or a subconsultant, we have had SEBs actually fill out that same document as well and actually have put in 100% or a certain percentage that they perform as well. So, we do have precedence that it has happened before. I will also say that I spoke with Mr. Penn, and I know of Jose's work, and I certainly agree with Winsley. This is just an unfortunate situation. These are two very good SEBs, and we're happy that they're certified with us. And they've actually done other work before as subconsultants for other primes for the city. This just happens to be an instance where they are the prime on the job.